Thank you and good morning to everyone. Thank you for being here today. But before we begin the council session, I will make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, the Inquirer, the Legal Intelligence, or prior to the meeting, and can also be found on phl-council.com. Now note the hours come. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance, and members that are in attendance just say a word or two to make sure that your images displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the city of Philadelphia. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the Philadelphia President.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gotti A.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia President.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the city of sisterly love.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the city of brother love, sisterly love, and sisterly effectiveness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman O?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kennedy Sanchez?
Good morning, Buenos dias. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola? Councilman Thomas?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public.
Good morning.
Councilman Clark?
And good morning to all. Thank you very much. Council will now come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Rabbi Pinkos Emlando of Talmikiko Yeshiva of Philadelphia. Hope I pronounced that correctly. He is here today as a guest of Councilman Jones. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation. Thank you, Rabbi.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the City Council. Councilman Jones of the City Council for this honor. We live in frightening times. It's rather another world war, God forbid. Nuclear weapons looms over us. All around the world, countries are in turmoil and strife. Innocent people are caught in the crossfire as brutal regimes struggle to stay in power. Governments are overthrown and people live in constant fear. Even in our country, the struggles are real. Political bickering has turned into hatred. Our sacred places have been attacked. Our schools are no longer safe havens. What causes someone to drive a car into a crowded people at a party? To open fire in a place of worship? What drives a young teenager to pull a gun on his teachers and fellow students? What have we come to that our police and first responders are in danger of being killed every day? Our sages taught us, pray for the peace of the government. For if not for the fear of government, a man would swallow his friend alive. I fear we have reached that point. There's no fear of authority. Everything goes, and there is no right and wrong. It appears to me that people have given up on their... Have given up. They've lost their faith. They see no future and resign themselves to misery. How can we fix this? What can we do to strengthen the ship? Start with each and every one of us. We must focus on the positive. There's a reason everyone wants to come to this country. There's a reason China, Russia, and Iran are jealous of us. We must stop focusing on what is wrong and focus on what is right. We must stop looking at what we can do and focus on what we can. Each and every one of us will spread optimism to our family, our neighbors, our community. We can turn the tide. Let us focus on opportunity, on a better future. I am jealous of the members of this council. You've been selected by your peers, your friends, and neighbors. It's the most honorable title there is. You've been elected to be a servant of the people. To help guide our noble city and help its inhabitants thrive. You have the power to reach across the aisle, reach out to family, friends, and neighbors, and uplift them. You have the opportunity to stem the tide, to give courage and succor to our youth. To educate them and lead them toward a life of hope, not despair. When I was a child, my parents had a record that I would listen to. It was about a small train that needed to pull a large, heavy string of freight cars up a steep mountain. I can still hear the refrain, "I think I can, I think I can, I think I can." Let's keep this refrain in our minds and spread it everywhere. "I think I can, because I know we can." Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rabbi. Really appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, this is Marswell, present for this... Somehow got kicked off again right before introduction.
Thank you. Let the record reflect Councilman Scola as president. Thank you, Rabbi. Praise him. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 17, 2022, and the chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 17, 2022, be approved?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 17, 2022. Stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is required for a leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Please shall be granted to Councilman Johnson. And again, Councilwoman Parker will make a motion on the Sunshine Act, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And I would ask the clerk, please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president, members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 23, 2022, I signed the remaining bills which were passed by council at its session on March 10, 2022, except Bill Number 210778AA, which I am returning without my signature. And then on March 23, 2022, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on March 17, 2022, Bill Number 22011. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority these conveying fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the second councilmatic district of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties. And resolution number... And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia land bank to dispose of 5026 North 7th Street, located in the 8th councilmatic district. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority these conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 5th councilmatic district of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority these conveying fee simple title to 1446 North Dover Street, 1446 North Newkirk Street, 1629 North Marston Street, and 1631 North Bailey Street in the 5th councilmatic district of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1604 through 1608 Page Street, 1610 Page Street, 1612 Page Street, and 1614 Page Street. And authorizing the redevelopment authority to execute the redevelopment contract with Habitat for Humanity Incorporated and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we ask that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for the next session of council, unless they have been referred to committee. In a current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I would like to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Parker offers one bill on behalf of Council President Clark entitled Anordinance, admitting Section 2101 of the Philadelphia Code and other residence requirements by clarifying that temporary residence outside the city, including for military service or educational purposes, does not prevent a person, including a police recruit, from meeting the residence requirement.
Verge to committee? Hold on, Mr. Decker. Mr. Councilman Jones, did you want to be recognized now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution entitled a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt the Whole Home Repairs Act, Senate Bill 1135, and thanking Senator Nicholas Saval for his commitment to creating safe, efficient, resilient housing in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Councilwoman Richardson?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify for the record that today I am co-introducing this resolution with my colleague, our Majority Leader, Councilmember Sherrell L. Parker, calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt Senator Saval's Whole Home Repairs Act. Thank you very much to our Majority Leader for co-introducing this resolution with me and for your laser beam focus on home ownership for our middle-class families here in the city of Philadelphia. And thank you to Senator Saval for your leadership on this very important issue. If COVID has taught us anything, it is that our homes are so much more than physical structures. They are where we gather with our loved ones, now where we work, and they are also central to building generational wealth for our families. But as we all know, Philadelphia has a very old building stock and very high rates of poverty. Our residents are the most energy burden, and many of their homes have significant issues, including exposed wiring, and I'm going to take it back to knob and tube wiring, mold, poor insulation, and more. Your home, the very thing that is supposed to provide stability, wealth, health, and safety, is literally crumbling around you, and this asset becomes a liability. The Whole Home Repair Act will help Pennsylvania address this crisis. It provides funding to rebuild homes and make them healthier and more energy efficient, coordinate services to ensure we are taking advantage of every possible available resource, and create job training opportunities and programs to put people on a path to family-sustaining and supporting careers. This is exactly the type of program we need to address climate change, build resiliency, maintain and build generational wealth, and create new economic opportunity. I am so grateful to our partners in Philadelphia, like the Energy Coordinating Agency and the Philadelphia Energy Authority, and we thank you for your foresight in creating the Energy Authority, Mr. President, all who have been leaders in this work. And I look forward to our continued work together. So thank you again to Senator Saval for your work. We look forward to supporting you as you continue on your tour across the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I hope you all join us, Councilmember Parker and I, in supporting this resolution and this crucial legislation in our Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gimm offers a resolution declaring March 31, 2022 as International Transgender Day of Visibility in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers nine resolutions. In title of the resolution, appointing Afrozah Hussein to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Benjamin Lerner to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Hakim P. to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Hassan Bennett to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Jahli Hatchet to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing John Solomon to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Marilis Santiago to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Melanie DeBuz to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and a resolution appointing Rosora Torres Thomas to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, we are in the third leg of this relay to establish this commission which will oversee citizens and police interactions. We first started when we put it on the agenda in the ballot, and it was a charter change, and over a half a million people approved it. On the second leg of the relay was to find an eclectic balance of people with different life experiences and a balance within their geography around the city that contributes to that life experience. What I'm encouraged by this Oversight Commission is that they're willing to take formal training on how police methodology and operations should go. So on top of their advocacy, they want to take training. And I always say, oversight without insight is short-sighted. So they're looking to expand their experiences by taking this course. The third leg of this relay is you, our members in council, to vet these individuals. Resumes have been sent to all of you. We will have hearings, which will be scheduled by President Clark to allow you to talk to, question, gain insight of this group of individuals. The final leg of the relay will be during your responsibility, again, to appropriate a budget for the operation of this commission. So I look forward to completing the relay. We're handing off the baton to you, and we look forward to the conversation, interaction, and hearings. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your hard work. Again, that will be referred to committee.
Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating Women's History Month Champion of the Week, Masterman Girl Swim Team, on the league championship, and the 10 Philadelphia Public League Girl Swimmers on qualifying for the PIAA state championships.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers two resolutions. In title of the resolution, recognizing and honoring the life and service of Pennsylvania State Troopers, Martin F. Mac III and Brandon T. Siska.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution urging the White House to establish a process to swiftly admit displaced Ukrainians into the United States and to grant refugee status to Ukrainian citizens.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I'm sorry. There being no reports from committee. The consideration of the calendar. And there are no bills on our first reading calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. They are resolutions numbers 220251, 220255, 220256, 210831, 211005, 211006, 220025, and 220026.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210848, 220250, 220143, and 210743. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we have our public comment session, we will take a brief break to allow our technology professionals an opportunity to connect our speakers for today's public comment session. We'll be right back. Brief recess. Thank you very much. We are back, and we will start our public comment session. So now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we'll consider our public comment. It will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Today, we will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from town to town based on the volume of speakers. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. And once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. But once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. We also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made, the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for public comment at a meeting. Please be aware that this public meeting is recorded. Because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectations of privacy. So by continuing to be in a meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask the chief clerk to please read the first name on the list of our speakers today.
Yes, Mr. President. The first speaker we have today is Queen Judith Robinson, commenting on 210848 and 210865.
Good morning. Say your name for the record. Please proceed.
Yes, yes. Good morning, Judith, Queen Judith here, Queen of civic engagement and citizenship, encouraging others to come and testify. This is your body here. This is your city council. So I want to testify on 210848 and 210685. And I want to give a Women History Month welcome to Mary McNapp, the reason why of 1600 block of Page Street. The reason why this property, this transaction is not moving forward is because Mary McNapp has nominated the parking lot as a historic site. She took it upon herself. I want you all to recognize that, okay? In the 30-second word, I'm so proud of her. Without any input, she decided, based on what she heard from her elected officials, that this would be a parking site in perpetuity for those homeowners there. So she took it upon herself. So I just want to give Mary McNapp a big shout-out in Women History Month. You know, we Black women have to really uplift ourselves. It's apparent to me, after what, 233 years? I'm talking about the Supreme Court, just digressing a little bit, to see how out of touch people can be as relates to the Black woman. So I just want to uplift her. And I also want to uplift in this Women History Month, talking about housing and advocacy over 50-plus years. Ms. Nellie Reynolds, Ms. Nellie Reynolds, say her name. She advocated like in a such diplomatic way. No, we don't have to lay down, but we do stand up. And she stood up for so many years. I want to make sure we never forget, never. We can't like revise facts, okay? Sometimes I see how we can do that. But as it relates to 210685, this special certificate of inspection. I'm thinking we need to do this with PHA houses. You know it's no way we're going to be able to obfuscate what has happened, such a terrible tragedy we endured with no firewalls. We got to get that reporting and see if we can't do this. Who do I talk to about that? I can't wait till you all get back in person, because I see how things are moving in this COVID environment, where you could do this, that, and the third with no mask on. But when it comes to the people's business, we can't get at you like we really would like to, just to talk to you, make sure you're including all of us. Because I see that Black women have to elevate themselves, amplify themselves, and with that, you know, I keep it within the limits. Have a good day, you all. Come on out, citizens, speak your piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. Real briefly, I just want to comment briefly, little clarity purposes, on 210848, the proposed affordable housing initiative for Habitat. It's been a matter of conversation for a number, period of time, in terms of the conveyance of properties. As the last speaker indicated, there was a application submitted for nomination of the parking lot where a couple of houses apparently were going to propose to be built on. Because there had been an arrangement based on compromise as it relates to the property's proposed development, the new resolution was introduced. This nomination, we had asked the Historical Commission to, as quickly as possible, to give us an indication as to whether or not they were going to hear the matter and vote on the matter. So given the history of this particular site, I want to make sure all things are clear before we proceed. But it is our intent to proceed based on the determination on the Historical Commission with respect to the parking lot. So, and I don't know what elected officials talked to the lady about suggesting that somehow there would be some level of permanency in the future as it relates to the lot, but it wasn't there on Clark. So just want to get clarity on that. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, call the next speaker. So just wanna get clarity on that. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, call the next speaker.
Yes, Mr. President. The next speaker is Corinne O'Connell commenting on two one oh eight four eight.
Good morning. State your name for the record.
Good morning. Good, good morning. This is Corinne O'Connell, I'm the C E O of Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President. Good to be with you all this morning. Um, I am calling in second week here um with regards to the properties, the new homes to be uh built on Page Street. So last week I had shared more nuanced reasons of why Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia should continue to move forward, be permitted to build on Page Street. Today I wanna focus and center that um on our shared humanity and the six families that will live in these homes. Um, we are ready to build on Page Street. We have the funding. We are ready. Um, these homes will provide a safe, warm, dry place to live six Philadelphia families. It's nearly thirty people and more than fifteen children, fifteen kiddos with bedrooms of their own, right? Homework at the kitchen table, creating stability. Um, so they can go to school the next day to learn. Um, at a time where home has been a classroom, home has been a workplace, home has been so intricately linked to our health, it is clear home is foundational. And it's also clear we need to build and repair as many affordable homes in our city if we're serious about addressing the affordable housing crisis. The Habitat team, we are ready, willing, able, um, ready to roll on these six beautiful new energy efficient homes that will be sold to first time Philadelphia homeowners. And we continue to be committed to our vision of a city where everyone has a decent place to live. And my hope, it is our intention that we will move forward to bring these six homes to Page Street to life, on Page Street, excuse me, to life. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Tariqa Richards commenting on two one oh eight four eight.
Good morning.
Great.
State your name.
Great morning, everyone. Great morning, everyone. My name is Tariqa Richards. And I am a future homeowner in the Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership Program. I first want to start off, I thank you, Mr. President Clerk, and all of the city council members present today for your time. I am calling to voice my support pertaining to the building of the six homes on Pa- Page Street. I am in fact one of those families that would own one of the homes on Page Street. I am a single mother of two. I've been in the program since November of twenty nineteen, which consisted of completing three hundred and fifty sweat equity hours, many workshops, and savings of S. Well. Habitat for Humanity has and still does provide me with the opportunity to prepare me to become not just a homeowner, but a successful homeowner at an affordable rate for myself and family. And we are forever grateful for their opportunity. Homeownership means a lot to myself and children. It's not just a roof over our head, but a place to call home and provide lots of love to my children and generations to come. I work in the field of child welfare for the city of Philadelphia, providing social services to help ensure children and families are safe. This job, as we all know, is not an easy task.
So listen.
But I do it because of my passion to help others for now.
Excuse me, can you, somebody mute themselves, please? Sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Richards.
This job, as we all know, is not an easy task, but I do it because it's my passion to help others. Now I'm asking for the assistance that I provide in return, and that is a warm and safe place to call home for my family. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Make sure you get in that house as soon as possible.
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Um, we now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda. Uh, after each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of a resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon subsequent objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, will you please now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda?
Resolution number two two zero two five, entitled Resolution Expressing Solidarity with Local Leaders of Ukraine. And resolution number two two zero two five five, entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Women's History Month Champion of the Week, I M O T A P Charter Schools Girls Basketball Team on its successful twenty-two season and winning the Philadelphia Public League Title two years in a row. And resolution number two two zero two five six, entitled the resolution approving the First Amendment to License Agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority with the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Market Street East Urban Manuela Area for certain, for a certain pedestrian bridge located between Tenth and Eleventh Streets above Filbert Street, including air rights, and authorizing the Redevelopment Authority to execute the First Amendment to the License Agreement with Keystone Philadelphia Properties, and to take such actions as may be necessary to effectuate the First Amendment to the License Agreement. And resolution number two one zero eight three one, entitled the resolution approving the appointment of McCullough Williams III to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board. And resolution number two one one zero zero five, entitled a resolution reappointing J. S. Feldstein to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And resolution number two one one zero zero six, entitled a resolution reappointing Bernie A. Presenica to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And resolution number two two zero zero two five, entitled a resolution appointing Erica Dura to the Board of Directors of, for the Old City Special Services District. And resolution number two two zero zero two six, entitled a resolution appointing Brennan Tomasetti to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Did it, Mr. Decker?
It is, Mr. President.
Very much. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that each of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it. And each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been approved. We now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular and second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero four eight.
Resolution number two one zero eight four eight, entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment in Urban Manuela of a portion of the model city's Urban Manuela area identified by house numbers and street addresses as sixteen oh four through sixteen oh eight, sixteen ten, sixteen twelve, sixteen fourteen, and sixteen sixteen Page Street.
Mr. Decker, I think we asked that to be held. That should have been held.
I was told it was gonna be withdrawn, Mr. President.
Oh, that's your fault. I'm sorry. My fault. I don't know why I ever questioned you, Mr. Decker. You, you, you are always on point. That's my.
Try, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, sir, I move that resolution number two one zero eight four eight be withdrawn and because Decker told us to, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that resolution number two one zero eight forty-eight be withdrawn. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution number two one zero eight four eight has been withdrawn. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two two zero two five oh.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office, Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, Philadelphia Sheriff's Office, Office of the City Controller, and the Managing Director's Office to conduct a joint evaluation of the city's current witness relocation and protection programs.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption. Second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two two zero one forty-three.
An ordinance amending section nine two fifteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streeteries to Add Additional Permitted Locations.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottiere?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla? Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The eyes are fourteen and the nays are zero. Majority of members present have not voted in affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two one zero seven forty-three.
An ordinance renaming and designating the property commonly referred to as the Eleventh and Banangle Playground located at thirty-six hundred North Eleventh Street as the Williams Moore Reed Memorial Park in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please follow the rule.
Councilwoman Bash?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Mute the council.
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottiere?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla? Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The eyes are fourteen and the nays are zero. Majority of all members present have not voted in affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
I do, Mr. President. Resolution number two two zero two five seven, entitled a resolution urging the White House and United States Congress to work with NATO partners in establishing a limited no-fly zone over humanitarian corridors in Ukraine. This resolution was introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the option of the resolution.
Um, point of information.
Hold on, hold on. Um, chair recognizes, I think Councilman Gim wanted to make a comment. Councilman Green, you had a point of information. Um, I'm, I'm old school, ladies first.
You so much, Council President. Um, first of all, you know, uh, glory to Ukraine and thank you to, um, you know, the incredible work that's been done here and abroad uh to end the violence that we're seeing. Um, and the potential for a world on the precipice of war, um, or global war, should I say. Um, but you know, one of my concerns about this resolution is that I do think that this is one of the areas um where uh the, whether by intent or not, the effect is very clearly that the issuance of a no-fly zone is effectively a declaration of war. Um, and I do not believe that the city council body should be the one to do that. I actually do think that that belongs with our members of Congress, um, with the Senate, uh, with diplomats and others. Um, and so, you know, I will be voting no on this resolution. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just had a point of information for a council member O, and I wanna thank him for his advocacy regarding um this issue regarding the Russian invasion of Ukraine. Um, I also um very concerned about the impact this has had. Um, this invasion has had on uh Europe, in particular NATO allies and refugees that have left Ukraine um to go into neighboring countries like Poland. So my point of information is in reference to the phrase in the resolution of limited no-fly zone. Want to get some perspective um from Councilmember O, what his meaning is in base in that language.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you for the question. So a no-fly zone is different from a humanitarian corridor no-fly zone. A no-fly zone um is a um is a uh forceful um uh declaration that anything in this space that is um a threat shall be shot down. Um, a humanitarian no-fly zone is limited to the corridors where, for example, uh, people are known to use in order to escape war, uh, medical supplies and things like that. Um, still, it is a no-fly zone. But typically, uh, such a no-fly zone is um worked out between, uh, for example, the U. S. and its allies NATO, uh, with some consideration um from the nation that is at war, that means the invasion is by Russia, uh, there's Ukraine. Um, this resolution, as with the other resolutions that I do, uh, I submit to um the Ukrainian government to get their input and edits and other things. Um, I do understand that um the U. S., uh, which is uh our president and our Congress, um, uh, is uh not in favor at this time of a no-fly zone for the reasons stated. However, the request um that uh actually President Zelensky made is for a limited no-fly zone to protect citizens and others who are fleeing war. And Russia has stated that they are not committing criminal acts, war crimes, they are not targeting civilians. And therefore, from that statement, they should not object to um a uh limited no-fly zone to protect those escaping from war. Uh, however, um, that is something that I believe um we as citizens can make a request. Obviously, the, the President of the United States and uh the federal government will, will negotiate that, work on it. But I think it's important to hear from the citizens what they think, how they feel about things. Uh, we leave that obviously to, to our federal government. We have no authority over that, you know, clearly. But I think a resolution stating that we support the efforts to have a humanitarian no-fly zone where people can safely uh leave without fear of being bombed or attacked, um, I think is important. There's ten million displaced so far, um, and uh increasingly civilian targets are being hit. And there are increasing civilian deaths related to that. Uh, as the war is not going well for the invader at this point in time, there's great concern of increasing attacks on civilians. And in addition to nuclear weapons, there are biological and chemical weapons that can be devastating in their impact. Um, so there are um a number of arsenals available. And I think it is important for um for combatants to come to some terms of a level of civility even in war. And I would say all the combatants, the soldiers, who are sent there by their nations, who are defending their countries, uh, they do also want a level of civility um in, in removing their dead and wounded. Um, and I would say also, listen, many of the Russian soldiers there don't wanna be there. They're just there. So I think um it's an expression on our part that even in times of the most brutal war, there should be levels of humanity and civility for the weak um who need the world to, to give its opinion as to how things should be conducted. I hope that's satisfactory.
Uh, Council President, I do have a follow-up point of information.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, um, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember O, for your statement. Um, in your text of the resolution, you make reference to humanitarian corridors. I know there's been conversations between uh Ukraine and Russia. Have those humanitarian corridors been established?
To, to, to my knowledge, the humanitarian corridors um are the corridors that exist. In other words, there are only certain ways that large groups of people can, can leave a um a um, an area that is being bombed um and uh an area that has no food, no water, uh, no, no medicine. And those are usually along highways and roads that lead to someplace else. And so those corridors exist. Um, to my knowledge, there is not an agreement between the Ukrainian government and the Russian government regarding how um those pathways will be made safe uh for non-combatants to leave the area. But, but it is something we hope that uh everyone will But, but it is something we hope that, uh, everyone will pay great attention to in establishing, um, security for the many, uh, people we're leaving, especially, uh, many of the people we're leaving are children, um, elderly persons and persons with disabilities. Um, um, and, uh, many of the families are not intact as the men are staying behind, not all of them, but many of them, to, to fight for their country.
Council.
Um, yeah, thank you, um, Council President. And, Councilman O, I understand, um, that, um, perspective. Um, I not having a full understanding of whether those humanitarian corridors have been established by both Russia and Ukraine, and considering an even a limited no-fly zone over, um, corridors that are yet to be established, I think there's, or I won't say established, yet to be acknowledged and recognized by both parties. Because that's a concern that this body would take legislative action, official action, without having an understanding that this humanitarian corridors have been established and recognized by both countries. And calling for a limited no-fly zone, um, when those corridors have not been duly established creates concern. I would hope that based on that concern, um, that you, Councilmember O, would consider tabling this resolution, um, at this time because of that uncertainty and because of what a limited no-fly zone would entail.
Councilman O.
Yes, thank you. I guess I might as well make my comment now. I do understand the concern and perspectives. I, I hear it, you know, on my social media. People are concerned about World War III. Uh, what I'd say is this, um, we are heading to World War III because there are, uh, nine nations with nuclear weapons and one of them is not concerned about World War III. That, that's what happens. A nation with nuclear weapons have, has crossed the border into a democratic country and has begun to bomb and kill their civilians, take their lands and other things. Um, because they believe with great confidence that the other eight nations with nuclear weapons are not going to do a damn thing about it. And that's how we get to World War III. Now, um, while we are trying to, you know, send, um, like food and humanitarian aid, and while we deal with the issue of ten million displaced persons heading into Europe and where they go, um, I think it really is an issue that is just one of our resolve. Um, individual rights, according to our constitution, are God-given, not government-created. They're inalienable rights. That's part of our constitution. And when people get together to make decisions, they go through a democratic process, whether we like the results or not. And within these borders, we exercise a process of self-determination. Outside of our borders, other people, they do their own determination. And, um, when someone crosses into the border of free people exercising self-determination, uh, it is up to other free people, free nations, to defend their right uh, on the principle that all people are created equal and endowed with inalienable rights. When we sit back, when we don't take action, even the simplest things like passing resolutions for fear that somehow a dictator who has already violated sovereign space, already began bombing women and children, already is invading and talking about invading other places, we are inviting World War III. That's just my opinion and, um, you know, everybody has a right to their own concerns. I respect those persons who are very concerned about things. Um, and, and I don't think, you know, necessarily things are simple or easy. But I do think that as we are in the middle of this, um, process, um, that is, uh, I think something that, um, we can represent, um, our values on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, Council President. I was just handed this by my, my staff, smarter than me. So, nine humanitarian corridors were agreed on, I guess Wednesday. But, but who agreed on them? Was it, uh, Russia? And, or was it, who, who agreed on them? So, I was just handed it, um, that nine humanitarian corridors, um, to evacuate civilians trapped in Ukrainian towns, um, but there's no agreement by Russia. At least for one city. I, I don't know, I'm reading this, so I better not take that as gospel. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Councilwoman Gimm, did you have to, did you have a follow-up?
Just a very brief clarification. I think, you know, Councilman O has stated this very clearly. All of us feel the agony over what is happening at this time. Um, and it's not just in, you know, in Ukraine, we're feeling the agony of what we're witnessing in terms of civil war in Ethiopia and dozens of other countries around the world. But, again, this is not a statement about, uh, the need for humanitarian corridors, about the urgency of the US, uh, taking action. It's not, uh, you know, about the urgency of the US being supportive. Um, it's not a statement about, you know, solely about, you know, Councilmember, uh, Green introduced a resolution, you know, honoring, uh, the heroes within the Ukrainian resistance and, uh, the Ukrainian army. Um, we are all supportive. We're very clear about that. I do not believe our city council body should issue a declaration of war, um, through official action. I think that, uh, relies on the US Senate and our Congress, and just wanted to make sure that that was crystal clear. There may be a point in time where that could be the case, but I do not believe that this body should be the one that issues that determination.
Chair recognizes. Councilman Jones, did you want to be recognized? Oh, yeah, you keep hitting your, alright. Okay.
No, sir. Thank you, though.
Alright, I saw your, your hand raised. Councilman O.
Yeah, I do have a clarification. So, in fact, the, um, the Russian government and Ukrainian government have, ha- have recognized nine humanitarian corridors.
Okay. Okay, um, at some point, we're gonna have to wrap this up. Um, so, um, I know I'm not supposed to do this, um, I'm not supposed to speak that would attempt to influence the vote. So I will not say what I have to say until after the vote. Follow the rules. Uh, Councilman O, can you make your motion again?
Yeah, I move for the, the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
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 Uh, okay, let's do it again in, in unison, so we can do a better count. Huh. All, all in favor? Indicate saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
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 Alright. Council President, abstain. This is Councilmember Thomas.
Uh, Council President, I'll, I'll ask for a roll call vote, because it's kind of hazy to me.
Yeah, it sounds like it was, uh, more opposition and we are spending, frankly speaking, I know I'm not supposed to do this. We've way too much time on this, on this, uh, do have issues in the city of Philadelphia. Um, Councilman, you asked for a roll call?
Yes.
You're right. Mr. Decker, follow the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
No.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Nay.
Councilwoman, I couldn't, what was that?
Brooks is a no.
No.
Councilman Don?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Nay.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Nay.
Councilman Green?
Nay.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Nay.
Councilman Jones?
Abstain.
Oh, I, I, I have to jump there.
I can't do that. I can't do that.
No, you have to have a, a.
I have to have an opinion. Um.
It's just a resolution.
I know.
It's no conflict. Okay.
N- nay.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Nay.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye, I think I missed some earlier votes. Can I be recorded as aye?
Yeah, let, let Councilman Squilla, let the record reflect that Councilman Squilla voted aye.
I don't, I keep getting kicked off. I don't think anybody wants to be on today. Sorry.
Thank you. Your vote on this resolution is aye, Councilman.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
I, I, I was, I vote to abstain, uh, I vote that I'm present.
Councilman Ken abstain. It's not, it's not a conflict.
I.
I'll take a vote.
Well, I think, I vote no based on a lack of clarity of, of the resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Council President Clark.
I'm actually going to vote aye, and I'll explain it after we finish. So.
The ayes are?
Ayes are nine.
Six? The ayes are six.
And, and the resolution fails.
The nays nine.
Yeah. Alright, the resolution fails. Um, briefly, um, and we will have this conversation off-grid, um, because we do get involved in a lot of things that we don't have jurisdiction on. Um, frankly speaking, we have kind of set a precedent for this. Um, so, there probably should be some further conversation and guidance around what we do and don't get involved with, um, one way or another. We can't pick and choose when we decide we want to have a global approach or a federal approach or a state approach. Uh, so that issue is not kind of a red hearing, frankly speaking. Um, but, we have done this, spent way too much time on this particular issue. Uh, we are all saddened. Um, my, uh, aye vote is based on, frankly speaking, being pissed off every night. I turn on TV and seeing all these people being killed in Maine. Um, Putin is a war criminal. I mean, it is clear. I don't think he's listening to anybody. Uh, who knows where this is going, but, uh, we just have to pray and continue to be supportive, um, in whatever way we can. Already said too much as the chair. Um, I want to leave that alone. Uh, thank you all for your vote. Mr. Decker, we have any additional resolutions?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, speeches on behalf of the minority. None. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this Tuesday, um, in the Public Safety Committee, um, chaired by Councilmember Jones, just want to thank him for helping us to put together this hearing. We will do another hearing on the work of Man of PHL. Um, prior to the pandemic, we had hearings on their work, um, at Christian Stronghold, because we are still dealing with the issues of the pandemic. This will be on Microsoft Teams. So this Tuesday, March twenty-ninth at six-thirty PM, um, we'll be having hearings regarding the work of Man of PHL. Um, their executive director, someone we all know, Solomon Jones, and the Chair of Man of PHL, Dr. Brian Ellis. Um, Dr. Ellis did a study, um, and interviewed a number of young people they've worked with, uh, through the Man of PHL work. Uh, the title of their report is Exploring the Live Experiences of Black Males in Philadelphia Around Gun Violence and the Behaviors and Activities That Encourage Gun Culture. So they really spent some time talking with the young men who unfortunately get caught up in some of the challenges that we've seen in our city. We all know the information and numbers regarding gun violence, and so having the ability to have a more in-depth conversation this Tuesday at six-thirty PM, I think really provides the ability to talk and hear from, um, both Dr. Ellis and Solomon Jones about what they heard from young men who've been in, caught up in the gun culture in our city. Uh, so that'll be this Tuesday, um, March twenty-ninth at six-thirty PM. Of course, you can always watch our hearings at phl council dot com forward slash watch, or on Comcast Channel sixty-four, or FiOS forty and forty-one. And so, I know the young men that have gone through and have been working with Man of PHL have really gone through perseverance. Um, they perse- persevered to get through some of the challenges they've dealt with and persevered to be much better citizens and becoming better citizens, um, in our city. When I think about, um, that word perseverance, uh, it reflects on just this week, as we are still in March and Women's History Month, and I received a text message from a friend of mine that one of my classmates from the University of Virginia had a chance to witness her roommate from law school um, testify, um, this week, um, Judge, uh, Katanji Brown Jackson. And if you've heard her testimony, her personal story, and she made reference to the word perseverance and how she as a young lady coming from Florida, going to, um, Harvard, being in Boston for the first time, and being in a cold temperature, cold environment, and also received a lot of cold stares. And it was another African-American woman that was on the campus at that time, um, when she was in her, in her early years at Harvard, who walked over to her and said, basically, you have a right to be here. And it's that type of perseverance that she provided and learned from, and the type of perseverance that she has been dealing with this week. Uh, and hopefully very soon will be confirmed as the first African-American woman justice in the history of our United States, uh, Supreme Court. And I'm sure, um, the late Constance Baker Motley, who was the first federal, um, judge of African-American, African-American woman judge who was appointed by President Lyndon Baines Johnson in nineteen sixty-six, is smiling down. Uh, because she was the first African-American federal judge, and when you think about the number of judges in the history of our courts, there's been close to four thousand, um, judges who've been appointed to our federal court system. Only seventy have been African-American women, less than two percent. And, you know, Judge Motley, no, rose to become a chief judge of the Southern District of New York, um, during her time as a member of the judiciary. So I know she is looking down and smiling down at, um, future Justice Katanji Brown Jackson, uh, reflecting on the perseverance that she had, uh, in order to get to the federal bench in nineteen sixty-six, and the perseverance that Justice Motley, I mean, Justice Jackson has had to endure in order to get to where she is now and hopefully on, uh, the US Supreme Court. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Thank you, uh, thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Derek Green, for acknowledging our sister, uh, Judge Katanji Brown Jackson and the perseverance that she has displayed, uh, over the last several days. Uh, but today I rise to stand in support of the confirmation of my sister, Judge Katanji Brown Jackson. For the past several days, we have all witnessed brilliance, intelligence, strength, poise, courage, and determination under fire from an outstanding jurist, American and African-American woman, Judge Katanji Brown Jackson. And I'm going to keep saying her name. For so many, it has been triggering to watch the childish, clownish antics of a few, because the experience that's been on display for the world to see is an experience far too many women, especially black women, endure each and every day in our workplaces, during business interactions, and just being members of our community. It is an experience that many in generations before me learned to live with and deal with. I always remember my mom saying, "Don't make any waves, don't make any waves, Kathy." And she would always quote Hebrews twelve fourteen, "Follow peace with all men." I remember my mentor, Councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown, always saying, "Black women have to walk on water and fly to be considered equal, and that excellence must always be the standard." But like Senator Cory Booker, we are not letting them. But like Senator Cory Booker, we are not letting them steal our joy. Judge Katanji Brown Jackson, set backed by her husband, her children, and her family. She sat intently and confidently with excellence and filled with grace as she displayed the restraint of generations of women who have come before her like Violet Neatley Anderson, the first African-American woman to practice law before the United States Supreme Court, who was also the eighth president of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and Sadie T. Alexander, the first black woman to practice law in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, sister to our Majority Leader, Councilmember Sherrell L. Parker, in many generations to follow. So today I rise as a follow-up to my personal calls to the offices of Senators Casey and Toomey, asking them both to support the nomination of Judge Katanji Brown Jackson to the United States Supreme Court. And finally, Mr. President, I just want to pivot in advance of our, uh, budget session, uh, over the next couple of weeks, uh, and in advance of our budget and in advance of the impending selection of the new superintendent for the School District of Philadelphia. Uh, and as a rallying cry for all of us to understand that this selection is not just about a new superintendent, but about a district that needs a full vision for the path forward. Each year, Mr. President, and I remember this even as a staffer, this city council continues to increase the investment in education because we know that investing in our children now will pay dividends later. Uh, this year, Mr. President, I want to hear from the School District of Philadelphia on how they are ensuring they are using an equity focus in funding our schools, especially in under-resourced areas. And I certainly do not want to hear the same discussion that the schools are losing money to other entities when the school district continues to do the marketing for these entities. Two years ago, while seeking to register my daughter for kindergarten, we were not routed to our closest po- uh, closest public school. And we were using the School Finder app on the district's website. And we found, uh, that we would also be routed to a school, uh, two point one miles away, uh, which would require bus service instead of our closest local public school, uh, which was only point seven miles away for middle school. So how does this happen? I can only imagine what other parents across the district are faced with when seeking to attend their local public school. So I offer a few solutions. One, every family needs to have the choice of their local public school from the school district first. If another school is closest and they want to apply to that particular school, then the information for that school should be provided. The online portal needs to be fixed. And I'm gonna say this again, and I'm saying it publicly because I've said this privately for two years. The online portal needs to be fixed so that you assign families to their closest public school. The online portal should give families the options of the local public schools for their selection as long as the school is in their catchment area. And finally, when the district comes to us with projected enrollment data, which then impacts the amount of revenue the school is projected to receive, I am very concerned that these numbers are gathered in a way that is not fair and not based off of the School Finder, um, which incorrectly routes families to the wrong schools. So as we move into this budget cycle and think about the future of public education in our city, we must work with full and complete, correct information from the School District of Philadelphia. Nothing less will do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you so much, Council President. Um, and good morning, everyone. I wanted to take a moment to share an experience I had last week that really drove home for me the urgency of our city's gun violence crisis and how far we still have to go in addressing it. On Saturday, I was at an awards banquet for We Embrace Fatherhood, a fantastic organization that focuses on violence prevention in West Philly. I was leaving the event with my friend Dwayne, one of the co-founders of the group and a Manchurian Community Leader. It was a beautiful afternoon and there were lots of people out and about enjoying the nice weather. As we were walking to my car, all of a sudden we heard gunshots ring out. Thankfully, we were very close to my car at that point. We jumped in and Dwayne told me to get down as low as I could. So we waited out the shooting, ducked down on the floor of my car. There were so many shots and to be honest, I thought the bullets were gonna hit the car. I thought we were gonna die that day. But all I could do was pray and wait for the shooting to stop. And by the grace of God, we were unharmed and managed to drive away. I spoke to the police captain later and she told me though no one was injured, there were several shooters involved in this incident. This was an extremely disturbing and traumatizing event for me personally, but that's not why I'm sharing this experience with you today. I was able to get in my car and drive away, but many others live in this community. Our precious community members live on these blocks in Manchuria and on blocks like it throughout our city that have been the backdrop for gun violence over and over again, especially over the last two years. And what I hear from residents and what I've now experienced firsthand is that things are out of control in a way we haven't seen before. It doesn't matter if it's the middle of the day, if it's a Sunday, if there are kids around, shootings are happening anyway. I have childhood friends who live in Manchuria and they are trying their hardest to move away, which is terribly sad in its own way, but I can't even blame them because their city isn't telling them anything that's making them feel differently about the direction we're moving in. But if you can't afford to move and you feel trapped in a place where you feel scared to go outside or to let your kids play at the park, that's an injustice and it's a failure of our city to serve its people. We need to be doing so much more for residents in the neighborhoods of our city that are being terrorized by gun violence. Last year, reporting from the Philadelphia Inquirer uncovered that gun violence is intensely concentrated in distinct neighborhoods, uh, on mostly fifty-seven blocks in our city. So why are we not blanketing these blocks with resources like trauma support, youth programs, and conflict resolution? Why are we not hyper-focused on addressing problem properties in these areas, on dealing with abandoned vehicles in these areas, and on fixing broken streetlights? Particular schools like McMichael in Manchuria have been the backdrop for violence again and again and again. So why are we not establishing safe school corridor programs, not as a pilot, but at every school where this, this is a consistent problem? I want to express my gratitude to Captain Herter of the sixteenth district, who has been deeply involved with trying to address the violence around McMichael by expanding, um, her pinpoint boundaries. But this is a broader issue than this one school and it must be seen with a broader lens than policing. I also want to recognize the work and efforts of Erica Atwood, who leads much of the city's violence prevention work. Even with the, the efforts of these women and many, many other dedicated city employees, we still need to do more to meet this moment. We need expanded crisis response in Manchuria and neighborhoods like it around the city. Our Community Crisis Intervention Program is a great start, but fifty-four crisis responders cannot manage the volume of a city that reached five hundred and sixty-two homicides in twenty twenty-one and that is on pace to see more in twenty twenty-two. We need crisis responders walking these individual blocks twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And if we can't provide that as a city service, then we should look into getting boots on the ground in other ways, like paying community organizations to carry out these efforts. We know what works. We know the exact locations that need these interventions. And so it's maddening that multiple years into this crisis with thousands of people dead or injured, that we are still not meeting the moment with the kind of response that is necessary to make an impact. This is an alarm that I've been ringing the entire time I've been in office and an issue that many others have championed long before me. But still tragically, the crisis rages on, growing larger in scope with every day that passes. We are about to enter budget season once again. Now is the time to be focused, not just on upping the resources from the baseline we set last year at seventy million in new investment dollars, but also in finally approaching this crisis like the emergency that it is. In addition to the targeted deployment of resources I mentioned earlier, treating gun violence as an emergency means funding key city agencies like Parks and Rec, like Commerce, like the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services, like the Free Library, in a way that reflects their importance in our anti-violent strategy. And it means a directive to city agencies that this is an all-hands-on-deck matter, that every single city agency has a role to play in bringing this horrible chapter in our city's story to a close, not in a weekly meeting, but every single day. I've been a resident of this city my entire life and I've never seen things this bad. And this is about all of us. It's about every black or brown person who lives in neighborhoods where they are victimized and feel trapped by violence. But it's also about the ability of everyone who lives here to feel safe. With the scale of violence we're seeing and the pace of it, the way it's happening at unexpected times of day and unexpected spaces with more innocent bystanders around, Philadelphians understandably feel like things are out of control and they deserve to see that something is noticeably different. But we haven't gotten there yet, not just in respect to policing, but this idea of providing residents most impacted by this violence with a comprehensive set of resources every single day. Making people feel safe and supported is a fundamental aspect of our work as public servants and elected representatives. And right now, we need to be working overtime in a variety of ways to make that happen. And on top of that, we need to be bold and we need to be creative about our approach. For example, last year, the City of San Francisco launched a program where they're giving young men stipends to stop shooting. And participants can increase their stipends by hitting milestones in the program like landing a job interview, complying with probation, or consistently meeting with a mentor. This is the kind of creative step we need to be taking as a city if we're serious about ending gun violence. Because working within the established lines and bureaucracies that we created clearly isn't working. And that is what I will continue to fight for as long as it takes. Because we can't allow ourselves to become numb to this, especially those of us in positions of power. Especially those of us who have the privilege of not contending with gun violence as a real life or death issue for ourselves and our families every mo- waking moment of our lives. And because I love and care about this city so much and I want to see it grow and thrive and that can't happen if so many people are suffering and falling prey to so much violence. We can't sweep it under the rug. We can't ignore it and hope it goes away. We need to tackle it head-on as the emergency it is. That's the least that Philadelphians deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna be very brief. Um, I just first and foremost wanted to, uh, offer my condolences, um, to Tri-And Baptist Church and, uh, the entire Hall family as, um, Pastor Hall's son, Anthony, uh, transitioned this week. Um, I am a, a lifelong member of Tri-And Baptist Church. I grew up, um, looking up to Mr. Anthony and, um, his, his sons are, are good friends of mine as well as, uh, other members of the Hall family. So I just first and foremost wanted to offer my condolences, um, and, and, and let folks know that myself as well as this legislative body will be keeping, um, the family and the community in prayer. I then, uh, wanted to, uh, echo the sentiments of my colleagues, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, just with her frustration, um, with the school district. I'm not gonna be long-winded right now, uh, because I'll be on their phone this afternoon. And at some point, they gotta get tired of me calling. Uh, we need a lot of things over there. And I think a big step would be, um, hiring new government relations folks so we can, um, have regular communication with, uh, the School District of Philadelphia so we can address the needs of the constituents who communicate to us on a consistent basis. Um, last but not least, I just want to commend, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Gadié. Um, I'm praying for her. I appreciate her strength and her ability, uh, to continue to do the people's work, uh, throughout the course of the week. I tried to, uh, check on her a couple of times and pop up on her, uh, but she was so busy working, um, even after that incident, um, that you couldn't even, uh, s- o- offer some level of support and that speaks to, uh, her character, her passion, and her commitment, uh, to the constituents of the City of Philadelphia. Uh, but at the same time, what she talked about around this gun violence crisis, um, is absolutely right. Um, outside of the incident she experienced, uh, there were a number of homicides again this week. Uh, we received a troubling report that a student on the way home from basketball practice, um, was unfortunately shot, um, this past weekend, broad daylight, um, um, just caught in a crossfire. And that's another unfortunate incident that we're facing, um, as it relates to this gun violence in the City of Philadelphia. Uh, so, so I do, um, support her request and I do think that, uh, we need to see more of a sense of urgency as it relates to how we deploy resources, um, into the neighborhoods that are the most at need. Thank you, Council President, and thank you to this legislative body.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to, uh, I think bring to light some positive news. Uh, and that is, uh, the gift of Mackenzie Scott of twenty million dollars to Benefits Data Trust. You gotta love that. Boy, that's amazing stuff. And I know, Council President, you're a big advocate for the Earn Income Tax Credit and the Child Tax Credit and the fact that we have seventy-five thousand families in our city and three hundred thousand people who still don't get these benefits, totaling in the range of six hundred million dollars. And now, I know the Benefits Data Trust told us previously that for every dollar they receive, they can leverage that into eight dollars of benefits. So I'm just hoping that this twenty million, we can all work together and make sure that Benefits Data Trust can utilize that money for the citizens of this city to leverage that federal money. So I think that's a great gift. Uh, amazing on her part and I think we're all very appreciative of it. So, thank you and, uh, thanks for that opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Heck of a gift. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, um, and, and thank you for acknowledging me without my ability to type in the, uh, in the chat box. Um, I, I rise, Mr. President, simply to second the comments, uh, that were made by, uh, Councilmembers, uh, Green along with Gilmore Richardson. And I wanted to say for the benefit of the public, uh, who are watching, uh, right now, that if you get an opportunity, uh, please Google and see Senator Cory Booker, uh, from New Jersey, um, give his comments regarding all of the challenges that Supreme Court nominee Katanji Brown Jackson has been dealing with in the midst of, uh, her confirmation hearings. Um, wanted to, uh, just give you a snippet, Mr. President, of what he, uh, said. These were his opening remarks. He said, "It's hard for me not to look at you and see my mom, not to see my cousins." Uh, one of them who actually had to be here today and sit behind you. Uh, she had to have your back. Uh, I see my ancestors and yours. Uh, but don't worry, uh, my sister, don't forget, God has got you. And how do I know that? You're here and I know what it's taken for you to sit in that seat. When I watched that, Mr. President, um, I thought about Vice President Kamala Harris. Um, I thought about all of the comments that I heard after President Biden had made his, uh, selection of Vice President Harris. And I thought about, uh, the young girls and even some of our more seasoned women who said that representation is important because you can't be what you don't see. Uh, and I want to, uh, also encourage Philadelphians to view Senator Cory Booker's remarks, um, as, as courage under fire because he relates back, Mr. President, to when he first got, uh, to the United States Senate. And, Mr. President, um, he said that when he were walking, he was walking through the halls of the Senate, he said there were members of the janitorial staff who literally would walk up to him and hug him because they were so happy to see someone who looked like them serve in that capacity. So here they were, maintenance workers, the janitors, keeping that pristine building alive, but one of their own had the ability to sit in a chair and lead in, in, in governance. So, thank you, Councilmember Derek Green and, uh, Council, uh, Member Catherine Gilmore Richardson for, uh, acknowledging the importance of, um, Katanji, uh, Brown Jackson and what it means. Um, also just want to state for the record, uh, Mr. President, that, uh, next week, um, I will get an opportunity and invitations will be going out to all members of, uh, council to attend, uh, an announcement about a neighborhood public safety and community policing plan that once it is circulated to all members of council, um, it is my hope that members of, of this body will see the value in it. And while it does, Mr. President, acknowledge that we need a holistic approach to addressing this issue of gun violence and all of the underlying issues associated with why it is. and all of the underlying issues associated with why it is actually occurring. Mr. President, it does call for a part of that plan that we have not heard a lot of people talking about. And that is the issue of community policing. I'm talking about bike patrol and beat officers walking the beat in our neighborhoods, along our commercial corridors, near our recreation centers, and near our schools. And I think the reason why, Mr. President, this issue of community policing that you, Councilmember Johnson, Jones, Gaultier, and I, that we heard so much about when we visited Chester to get an overview about the success they have made in reducing violent crimes in their region, community policing is because there had been substantial calls for the defunding of the police. And, Mr. President, I want to say this for the record, that when I have traveled throughout this city, not just my district, but in neighborhoods throughout our city, I have not heard at one community meeting anyone in the audience or calling me or texting me saying, "Sherrell Parker, we need to be defunding the police." What they have said to me, Mr. President, is, "What about Moody and Merchant? What about those officers who were on bikes, who walked the beat, who got to know our residents, who were a part of the fabric of our community, but also gave us a law enforcement presence that wasn't reactive? They weren't responding to crime, Mr. President." I'm referencing the bike patrol officers and the beat officers. They were proactive. It was prevention. So I'm looking forward, Mr. President, to a very intense debate. There are some, and I want to say this to residents throughout the City of Philadelphia who may be watching right now, that beat officers and bike patrol may not be in vogue anymore. But I am not talking about this issue from the perspective of those who have written white papers, wrote white papers. I am thinking about those of you who live in neighborhoods and you are not amongst the thirty thousand black people who fled our city since the last census, the eleven thousand white people who have fled our city since the last census. You are those who are here either because you've chosen to stay or you don't have the opportunity to leave. And you do matter and you deserve to have a proactive preventive presence of community policing and law enforcement in your community. And let us not allow anyone to guilt and/or shame us into believing that our desire to have community policing and a law enforcement presence in our neighborhood is a bad thing. Every Philadelphian, every neighborhood in the City of Philadelphia, they deserve public safety and a preventive presence of community policing and law enforcement in their neighborhoods. So I'm looking forward to a robust discussion. And Public Safety Chairman Jones, I'll be following up with you after this meeting for one of the business owners in your district, sir, has actually agreed to host the announcement of this messaging and press conference. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes the aforementioned Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am compelled to second the remarks of Member Gaultier. That experience that she underwent, had to deal with, is what our constituents deal with every day. Whether they're trying to sit on a front porch and kid like Mr. Jones, young Mr. Jones, on Simpson Street, shot down while playing on his porch where he should have been safe. A shootout ensued and he was shot and killed. So I watched Member Gaultier's face on subsequent Zooms and I could see the post-traumatic stress in her face. When she was walking through the concourse of City Hall, you could see the weight of that stress and that shootout on her face. Multiply that by tens of thousands of citizens in neighborhoods who go through that anticipated stress and actual reaction to stress every day. I want to say that we, as a body, are in a unique opportunity. We're poised to review the budget. We're poised to review the production of the money that we appropriated last year, that we can say what is working, what needs to be tweaked, what we can just kind of chalk off to not working and reallocate money to programs that are working but need to come to scale. It's okay if a program is working a little bit, but it is not okay when it can't touch the numbers that it should to make a difference in gun violence. One of the programs that I've had the opportunity to deal with since Bernard Scott's murder in Tustin Playground, well, it's got to be closing in on seven years ago. Young boy watching a fight like a lot of people on council have watched as a kid, was an innocent bystander. The two combatants picked up guns, started shooting at each other, and he was killed. We got together and thank you, Councilwoman Bass, for your efforts to put cameras in rec centers like Tustin. But we pulled together the police of the nineteenth, the Septa Police, the Town Watch, members of the community, the administrators of Overbrook, Bieber then, SLA now, Gompers and a number of about, from Roxborough all the way down to Berry Elementary, pulled them together and what we do is a Monday morning roll call. Councilwoman Gimm's been on it, Representative Parker has been on it, Representative Seifus has been on it. I bring it to your attention because what it does is it takes cameras that oversee corridors, safe corridors, to get our kids into school and out of school. And they are monitored. Member Thomas, like when we went down to the Real-Time Crime Center, real eyes on our babies. And so when they see a crowd gathering at Fifty Second and Lancaster and wonder what's going on, is that a group of kids ready to fight? Or is it just a basketball team getting ready to get picked up to go to their game? That coordination with police, that coordination with Septa, to be able to move a bus schedule just a little bit so worrying kids don't see each other at their favorite pizza place. Simple as that. Letting some kids go a couple of minutes early to let other kids go a little minute late to save lives. These are the kinds of things that we need to start taking inventory of so that we can say, you know, that didn't cost us anything. It just cost us our time at seven AM in the morning. Thank you again, Member Gimm, for getting up that early. But it saved not a kid going to and from school since that installation has been murdered. So we need to look at things that are working, adjust things that are not, bring things to scale that should be brought to scale so that we can measure the impact of our efforts within the budget. If it ain't measured, it ain't managed. So we need to do that. And finally, I want to say to all, I want to offer an invitation for all of you, my members, to come get on that call. It's seven AM roll call Monday mornings. You can contact my office with the information to plug in because it should be replicated around the city. So with that, again, Member Gaultier, I'm sorry you went through that. But maybe in God's infinite wisdom, it was good that you went through that so you know what our citizens go through all the time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I wanted to go a different direction, but I do want to make mention of the gun violence here in the City of Philadelphia. I think a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that we were going to be burying Kamir Carlton, who was the son of former Streets Commissioner Donald Carlton, who was shot and killed here in the City of Philadelphia. And we buried him, probably the hardest thing that I have ever had to do. And I hope to never have to do anything close to that in the future. And so, and it was just a few days later that we had our own member of council go through such a horrific experience. You know, whatever we're doing, I say over and over again, whatever we're doing, we need to do more of. If we're putting money in, we need to put more money in. You know, if we're putting folks out on the street, ambassadors, police officers, you know, we need to do more to be able to make our residents feel safe. I think that one of the fundamental problems in the City of Philadelphia right now is that people just don't feel safe. And that's something that has to be addressed as quickly as possible. So I look forward to this upcoming budget season so that we can talk about that and have those kinds of conversations about really investing with the technology that I know that the police department needs. After our hearing this week, they talked about some of the technology needs that they had. And to me, the price tag was very inexpensive with a city with a, you know, a five-plus-billion-dollar budget. It was nothing. And so these are the kind of investments that are going to make our city safer. Two things I just wanted to mention really quickly is, and I've talked about this before, is we have opened, my office along with InWan has opened a jobs bank over at the Nice Town Library. We're operating every Monday and every Thursday with resume writing, job skills, interviewing skills. You name it, we've got it. And we also have placement opportunities. This week, we were doing placement for a childcare provider. So if you have an interest in that field, we want to encourage you to come on a Monday or Thursday to be able to receive those services. So that's the Nice Town Library, which is located at the intersection where Broad Street, Germantown Avenue, and Area Avenue all come to an intersection. So we hope that, you know, folks will come out and participate in that. Secondly, I wanted to make sure that people knew and were aware that this coming Saturday, there's going to be a rally in support of KBJ, our Supreme Court nominee. I'm super excited about it. It's at eleven o'clock sharp. You know, it's calling for rain, but we are rain or shine. You know, this is going to be a historic moment for our country. We want to show our support here in Philadelphia. And I really just wanted to encourage folks to come out. It's going to be this Saturday at eleven AM on Dilworth Plaza at City Hall. So please come on out and show your support for KBJ and also for the fact that we are not going to stand by and not speak out when this young lady who was highly qualified and her qualifications far exceed members of the sitting Supreme Court, members who are currently seated. You know, we are not going to sit by idly while she is mischaracterized and the narrative around her is promoted in a negative way. We will not sit by idly and let that happen. So please come out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe that concludes our speeches on behalf of minority and majority. And with that being said, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, ten AM. All in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carried. And again, please be safe. All right. Thank you all.